Mayor's gonna be calling in. So we'll see. If I remember.
Okay.
So I have to promote her. I don't know where anybody else is coming.
Uh, it looks like Melissa's in.
Zooming in or I don't know. I don't know. Mayor's gonna be calling in. So we'll see.
Okay.
So. I don't know where everybody else is coming in.
Uh, she's in.
Zooming in.
Hi guys. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay.
We have a weird echo, so please ignore it for a minute until we fix it.
Okay.
Where does this zoom?
Uh, she's in.
Zooming in. Can you hear me? Yes, I can hear you. Okay. We have a weird email, so please ignore it for a minute, Tony, please.
All right, our weird echo should be fixed now.
Okay, so we got the. Let's see. Go on the executive session, we have half. Two thirds quarter, Tony?
Um. Stay there.
Good afternoon, Mayor.
Hey, um, when I tried to dial into the links that, um, Ben sent, they weren't working properly at the beginning. I had to cut them because they stunk. I don't know if there's a problem on my end. Finally did get in. But.
Yeah.
And I'm trying to. And I'm trying to get some earphones set, so we don't have to have a lot of background noise.
Um, give her something.
Thank you.
It's all quiet.
Yeah.
We're muted here.
Yes.
Oh, everyone's sorry.
Could I have to wheels and say your name?
Uh.
Faye. Faye.
Yes, Faye.
Can you share the screen with the agenda so we can, someone can read exactly has it, has to be, uh, said for going into executive session? Or Melissa, do you, do you have it? Melissa, do you have it on your, your computer?
Uh, I'll have to get Nick to pull it up. He has someone running the Zoom.
I could do that.
Barbara, what did, what did you want me to look for? The executive session language?
Not the executive session language, the full language that we have to read going into executive session and then repeat again.
Oh. Um. I have the executive session language from Ben.
It's the language we read. Can you hear me okay, Melissa?
Yep.
It's the language that has to be read, um, when, after we've called the meeting to order and going into executive session, to go into executive session.
Okay. If Faye is there, I think Faye's there, right, Faye?
I, I am. Nick is pulling it up and he's gonna share his screen with you.
Great. Or you know what? Jessica's present. I see her. Hi, Jessica.
Hi.
You could just have her read it since she's present.
Yeah, I got it.
Okay.
Wonderful. Thank you, guys.
It's a charm.
Do we have? Do we have Kim on board?
Uh, we may. Let me, let me check here. I had to minimize to get the, uh. No, not quite.
We have yourself, Mayor, uh, Mayor for Tep Yusef and Councilor Beal currently in attendance.
Let me see if anyone's texted about trying to get in.
I did send a text to Kim just right now to see if she was gonna be able to join us or if she was having some issues.
Has there been any update from Council of Bosmans? I have none.
No, ma'am. No update on my side.
I spoke with IT this morning about that and they were, they were working on, um, uh, changing their firewalls to allow access out of the country. Um, so I don't know how, where that's quite at, but it's being worked on. I don't know.
That's for Councilor Bosmans?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Okay. We have a quorum though. Let me just check one more time on Kim.
Kim just messaged me. She said she's on her way.
Okay. Jose, any update from Kim?
No, ma'am. The last thing that I had received was that she was on her way just a few minutes ago.
Okay.
She's calling. She's on.
I don't know if she's coming. I assume she's coming. Let me push.
She said zooming, so I guess she's just getting in now.
Yeah. We're keeping an eye out for her.
Yep.
I'll be muted much of the time, uh, but I prepped Melissa that if I have any, uh, electronic difficulties, she can jump in. That's the reason we need, we really need four of us, just in case I lose connection.
Texting her. She just needed the link, so I'm sending it to her.
I mean, she's on.
Okay, welcome, everyone. No problem. We all had trouble getting that link. Um, my apologies, uh, for the late start. I'm Barb Noseworthy and this is December twenty seventh, twenty twenty-two, and we are having a special session of City Council. City Clerk, can you please call the role?
Counselor Baxter?
Present.
Counselor Bosmans? Counselor Beal, here. Mayor Proton Yusef?
Here.
And Mayor Noseworthy.
Present. Um, for the record, let us also indicate that we have, uh, City Manager Jose Madrigal and interim City Attorney, uh, Tony Mast- Mestares. This is a meeting to go into executive session and I believe Counselor Beal is in the session. Can you please read the purpose of the meeting and we'll need to then have a motion and second, and then followed by a second.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to go into executive session, uh, discussion and possible action concerning a motion to convene an executive session for the purpose of this, of discussing the resignation of the Assistant City Attorney and interim City Attorney pursuant to CRS twenty-four dash six dash four oh two four F.
I'll be, before we have it, before we have a second, I just wanna be real clear because we have been trying to, um, Jessica, if you wouldn't mind, the first step would be to read the purpose of the, why we're in session and then followed by exactly the same thing. My apologies.
I, I hate to interrupt. This is Nick. Um, we, since we started the Zoom early, we did not begin the recording at the beginning, so I'll, I'll start that now. It is, has been recorded live on YouTube. We do have some redundancy there. Sorry about that.
No problem. We'll start three, I'll start the recording and, and we'll start all over.
It's recording now.
Thank you. All right, welcome. My name is Barb Noseworthy. I'm the mayor and this is December twenty-seventh, and this is a special session of the City Council. Um, City Clerk, can you please call the attendants?
Counselor Baxter?
Present.
Counselor Bosmans? Counselor Beal, here. Mayor Proton Yusef?
Here.
And Mayor Noseworthy.
Present. Now we need a, a reading of the purpose for joint for this meeting, followed by a rea- uh, reading of the motion and then a second.
So the purpose of this meeting, um, I have two point one is discussion and possible action concerning a motion to convene an executive session for the purpose of discussing the resignation of the Assistant City Attorney and interim City Attorney pursuant to CRS twenty-four dash six dash four oh two four F. So now I'm gonna make a motion. Okay, I'm gonna make a motion, um, for discussion of possible action concerning a motion to convene an executive session for the purpose of discussing the resignation of this City Attorney and interim City Attorney pursuant to CRS twenty-four dash six dash four oh two four F.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Counselor Baxter. Any discussion? Let's have this vote.
Counselor Baxter?
Yes.
Counselor Beal?
Yes.
Counselor Bosmans is absent. Mayor Proton Yusef?
Yes.
And Mayor Noseworthy?
Yes, we will now convene an executive session. Thank you.
And we, Fay, you're there? Okay.
I am, and we are good to go.
Great, thank you. The time is now 1:41 PM, and the executive session has been concluded. The participants in the executive session were Barbara Nose with the mayor, Melissa Youssef, Mayor Protem, Councilor Baxter, Councilor Buell, Jose Madriol, city manager and assistant, and interim city attorney, Tony Maestres. Absent from the meeting was Councilor Bosman. For the purpose of discussion, for the record, council met in the executive session for the purpose of discussing the resignation of Assistant City Attorney and interim city attorney session pursuant to CRS 2464024F. For the record, if any person who participated in the executive session believes that any substantial discussions of any matters not included in the motion to go into the executive session occurred during the executive session, or that any improper action occurred during the executive session in violation of the open meetings law, I would ask that you state your concerns for the record. Seeing none, the next item on the agenda is discussion and possible action concerning the resignation of Assistant City Attorney and interim city attorney. Is there any motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept the resignation of the Assistant City Attorney and interim city attorney effective January 9, continuing upon appointing an interim city, appointing before contracting an interim city attorney by the 9th or upon a day after the 9th, an interim city attorney is appointed or contracted, with a final date no later than January 18.
I'll second that.
Any discussion before we have this vote? Councilor Baxter, your microphone is off.
It's on.
Oh, is it off? Sorry, do you wish to speak?
Yeah, sure. So I just, I think this is a very difficult decision that Tony has made, and I really appreciate the work that he has done and the contribution to our organization. I want to point out that there's a supermajority of council support for Tony, and that has been evident in many of our meetings. The only exception to that would be Councilor Bosman's, and I don't know whether or not that had any impact upon Tony's decision, but I do know that having, without the unanimous support of council, it is very, very difficult, and I don't feel that that lack of support was justified. So I wanted to make that clear and just say, Tony, I wish you the best, and I hope we get a city attorney by the 9th, so, thank you.
I would echo all of that. Well said by Councilor Baxter, but Tony, yes, thank you again for your efforts of trying to help the city and trying to step in and fill a pretty big void for us. And so, we just appreciate it. We appreciate your attempts very much. We recognize that you are placed in a very difficult situation and in a difficult, you tried to help in a difficult job. And so, just so you know, you do, you do have our support going forward, and, and we, we really appreciate your attempts to help us as a city and recognize the difficult position and environment in which you are operating. So thank you very much.
I'll just say, I echo what Councilor Baxter said, and you have my support. I wish you and everyone else the best. Thank you for your efforts to try to step in a position that you were intending to get cranked on, and then you can take a full life into it, and I appreciate that, and your, you being here for us. So, thank you very much, and hopefully you find someone great to take over by the 9th, so you can move forward.
I also will jump in and echo what Councilor Baxter said, that the importance of having the full support of council, and I recognize that you have a supermajority, but you're also in a difficult situation, and you really need to have full support from council to do your work, but also recognizing that you, you made a decision that also reflects your desire to stay in a new position for some period of time. And I appreciate the self-awareness that you recognize this is not an environment that, or the kind of practice that you wanted to follow. So I appreciate so very much your work, and wanted you to know, again, a supermajority of council supports your work, and I personally am happy to serve as a reference for you at any time based on your work here for the city. On that note, I don't know, before we take a vote, if, if Tony, if you wanted to say anything, I would give you the opportunity as well.
Thanks, Mayor, and thanks to the council. I just want to say thank you, and I apologize for the inconvenience of having a meeting today, but I do appreciate the support that everybody has expressed. I think the council was also put in a very difficult position up ahead, and I think you really have no choice other than to sort of do what we've done here. And I'm just, I'm just glad that we're in the moment through the city manager's efforts to get the permanent city attorney here, who's all willing to do this work, and I think the city will be in a good position here.
Great, thank you, Tony. On that note, we need the vote, please.
Councilor Baxter?
Yes.
Councilor Beal?
Yes.
Councilor Bosman is absent. Mayor Protem Youssef?
Yes.
And Mayor DeWesrope?
Yes, thank you. The next item under this item point two is to discuss going forward what we will do. We have Baker Tilly working on a permanent city attorney, and then we would need to look at Tony's suggestion that we look at an interim city attorney in the period until we
that we look at an interim city attorney, um, in the period until we get this, um, other person hired or, uh, so I wanted to get, uh, council's thoughts on going forward, what we need to be doing and then a sense of direction or a decision on, um, what, uh, that might involve.
Mayor, if I may, just from a staff perspective, just kind of give a little bit of overview for the council to see kind of where we're at today and then some input in regards to the direction staff is heading, the direction that the council wants to continue in that way, understanding, being flexible and nimble as possible as we can. Uh, Tony has worked really hard and I think it worked pretty hard together in trying to give the council to a position to which, uh, there would be some viable candidates to, that have expressed interest in the interim city attorney position uh, or has been affirmed in taking over those capabilities. Uh, what we're looking at right now, and then I'll hand over to Tony and talk about some of the firms he's reached out to, he's been doing more reaching out, but from a timing perspective, possibly looking at January 3rd at that council meeting at a date, uh, to view the council to do interviews. Uh, we did do our agenda meeting as a light agenda. Uh, we have a consent and then just one public hearing. Uh, so it would be in well likely would be able to do it on the 3rd. We wouldn't have time to do so, so it's now like a half agenda and then we're throwing more on top of it. Uh, I think there would be some room for that to be able to work as a date, but we're going to put that out there and then kind of kick it to Tony for him just to talk about the outreach that he's done and the interest being received, uh, for people, there were firms that are interested in this possible position. Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. So, so yes, I, I talked to, we actually started these conversations a week prior to this, after I had my conversation with you during my evaluation. I reached out to the Colorado Municipal League, their general counsel, uh, about some ideas for how this could go and he recommended some, some firms and individuals who do this sort of work, um, that being come in and help out a city who's in a pinch and needs an interim or an acting city attorney while they're hiring permanent city attorney. Um, and so we have a list of five or so candidates, both law firms and individuals, um, who have their sole practice, uh, who, who expressed preliminary interest in, in serving from January through the higher rate of a permanent city attorney. Um, and so those folks are sort of already free screened by CML to some extent, but they have municipal law experience and most of these candidates have significant municipal law experience. So I think that's really good for the city. Uh, and so I think, um, what I suggested now is that the city today was, the city council today was likely to sort of give direction to, to staff and to the city manager, uh, or what you'd want to see at the next meeting. Um, the list of candidates, their qualifications, probably would be a good idea to have them look at a draft contract or propose their own so that during that meeting you all could see what they have to say as far as rates and availability go uh, and you could make a decision based on those interviews pretty swiftly, I think, um, what you think is best for the city.
Thank you, thank you, Tony. Um, uh, Jose, just for clarification, were you suggesting going into executive session for that review of those applicants?
That part we're still working on, uh, with, uh, working with Tony and also reaching out to just the couple of cities of how that works for a city attorney, uh, position and evaluation. Uh, in the open records, uh, section, there's a section specifically carved out for the city manager, uh, so that's the one I'm more familiar with, not so much familiar with the city attorney. Uh, but we would get all of those answers and workouts, uh, before the 3rd and post it in which way, if the council sent the 3rd was a big day, post it in the way that needed to be done.
Okay, thoughts from council?
I appreciate you bringing, reaching out to CML, Tony, thank you very much. Um, great resource and sounds like we have some options to consider for January 3rd. I would definitely be in support of that, um, whether it be an executive session or an open meeting, whatever is most appropriate. And, um, I'd look forward to continuing the discussions.
Yes, I agree, I, um, supported the January 3rd addition of some interviews for potential candidates, um. Yeah. Do we need to talk about what we want them to turn to the table or are you guys willing to let out like staff name?
I mean, any suggestions that you have would be well received. But I think right now what we're looking at, uh, is just kind of coming in, providing an overview of their experience to the council, uh, probably talking a little bit about what their rates are, um, and then being able to have an opportunity to answer and ask questions. Uh, it's kind of how I see it, um, if there's anything specific, uh, that the council or Tony you have in mind that they need to be prepared to address, we can always pass that information on.
It would be, I, for me, it would be, um, informative also to know if they've come into a similar situation where there isn't a, um, you know, where they're not taking over from a acting long-term city attorney and it's this a little bit more of a, a challenging situation. If they've had that kind of experience would be helpful for me to know too.
Absolutely, um, that's a, that's a really good point and definitely something we can look into, uh, because this is a, a different one just as the circumstances went with their sudden resignation and then Tony coming on, that was on Tony's first day. Uh, the history there is still a little bit tough for us as staff to bring, so I think that's a really important question to ask, the experience of somebody being able to transition into that and how they'd be able to handle that portion of it.
I also, uh, would support this being on January 3rd, either an executive session or, um, non depending on the stature. I also am interested in communication with Baker Tilly so that we make certain that there's no confusion there, um, or any of the potential candidates that they're reaching out to. Does council have some thoughts? I'd be happy to call them or we could perhaps have a staff call them uh, to explain the situation if necessary.
Mayor, I may, uh, I apologize, but I did have a call them this morning just to let them know that this meeting was happening.
Perfect.
Recently before and just to make sure that they weren't called off. All right, so I apologize if I got out too much in front, but I did think that, uh, they need to be aware of this, is it any respective, uh,
No, I-
wanting to get everyone probably have a way to be able to respond.
No need to apologize to me, we were cut off on the phone a bit that due to my situation, so I appreciate your initiative.
Well, and I also think that given that staff and Jose in particular has been the contact for Baker Tilly and is managing it, that's probably the best way to do it. Um, I too support the January 3rd conversation in whatever meeting is appropriate and, um, go forward from there.
I think just for me, like some of the things that I can just what obligations or rates, like a preliminary contract review of what they would be signed into, so we kind of have an idea. I would like, um, uh, Council, Councilor Baxter's experience of taking over in a situation like ours, um, experience with accessibility like we've recently been going through and then maybe an experience with destructive council members like you have happening right now, um, just so we can kind of see what they have had happened and know that they're given to what obligations they have over there.
And I would just add too, um, certainly we want to know their availability to attend our meetings, uh, all of them, please.
I do.
Yeah, and Mayor, this is Tony, I just, I think it's probably a good idea to save some of the parameters for the discussion, especially, I'm sorry, for an executive session. I think that's appropriate in this circumstance. I just wanted to make sure that we're absolutely on a sound bite. Uh, so things like compensation and, and you're able to look at that sort of thing. I think, I think if, if we're going in this direction for on January 3rd, we have these interviews and have the opportunity to, to get their experience and have that conversation with them, what their availability is and whatnot and spend a little bit of time with them. I think that's going to be really helpful, yeah. Because what I was hearing is that maybe, what I was suggesting is that we send out, um, sort of template contract to these potential candidates, um, invite them to look it over and sort of put together their thoughts on it or does they have their own engagement letter that they typically use in these situations, uh, to bring that with them to that, to that executive session, to that discussion.
That sounds very good to me, I'm looking to, for other counselors.
I support that.
Great, any other items related to this, uh, the interim city attorney? Hearing none, I will close this meeting. Thank you all for coming in, making time to do your council duties and I appreciate you and we'll see you in the new year.
Happy New Year, everybody.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.